Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's Dayton City Council for August 6, 2022. Roll call, please.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Member Volter?
Here.
Member Neary?
Here.
Member Neiman? Member Kelly?
Here.
Member Lovins?
Here.
Member Basler? City Administrator Fawcett?
Here.
And City Attorney Emmetson?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you very much. Go ahead. I'd like to start off with a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance to the flag. And when you're doing your moment of silence, make sure that we're thinking of our friends in Eastern Kentucky who are dealing with a major catastrophe. Thank you. For this month's mayor's report, first of all, I want to thank Member Neary for taking care of last month's meeting. I was traveling and I really appreciate your dutiful leadership. Well done, sir. Second of all, on the mayor's report, can't say enough about Donna Ledger. Donna retired this month and she was our city clerk for 37 years. Tiffany Myers is doing an amazing job so far as her replacement and we're looking forward to many more years of that. Lastly, we have on our mayor's report is on Wednesday of next week, we'll have the Field of Dreams. So the Cincinnati Reds are participating in a really incredible event where they're going to be playing the Chicago Cubs in the Field of Dreams in Dyersville, Iowa. It's a very special thing. Only two teams have ever done this and our Reds are doing it this year. So in honor of that, we'll be having the Field of Dreams movie showing in our memorial park over in Sixon Berry. So I'd like to welcome everybody to come out and watch the movie, enjoy it. There'll be peanuts and Cracker Jack and come on out and watch the movie and be with your community. So please look forward to a good time. Nine o'clock. So we have to kind of play with the sun given the projector. So nine o'clock on Wednesday. That's all I have for this month's mayor's report. The next on the agenda will be to accept the minutes for July 19, 2022. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes for July 2022? I bet you would. It was your meeting. Do we have a second? Second by Member Kelly. All in favor? Any nays? Any abstentions? Moves forward. Next, we would like to ask anybody from the audience, if you have any comments regarding any of the ordinances on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak with council and administration, you are allowed to come to the podium and speak to council and administration regarding tonight's agenda. Yes, sir. Please state your name and your address. Perfect.
Okay, I can talk louder, too. Believe me. My name is Dave Cubza and I live in the Gateway Flats Apartments. So that's 256 Manhattan Boulevard, in case you didn't know. I saw that in this, you have the ordinance number 18, an ordinance to increase the number of members on the museum board. Is that the historical museum board or what museum?
So that is a museum, the museum board is right by Memorial Park. Have you seen it before? The Heritage Museum. And so I can't remember the name of the gentleman, the real estate agent and-
Charlie Tharp.
Charlie Tharp for years was an insurance agent in town and he collected all kinds of memorabilia about Dayton and also photographs of buildings that have been around since the turn of the century. And so when he died, he donated that property, that building and all that material to the city and the city now runs that as a museum. It's open on Saturdays, I believe, and also by-
Yes, two Saturdays a month, yes. The second and the fourth, I believe.
Right, and by appointment, too. So we increased the number on the board from three to five. We had a couple of people interested in participating and the current members said that was fine. They were good to have more people.
Well, I was just putting my, I wanted to put, if there was a nomination or whatever, I'm going to put my own name in nomination.
Yeah, are you, are you interested in participating?
Yes, yes. I, when I was 50 years old, I got a degree from the University of Cincinnati in history, you know, so.
That's great.
And I might as well use it. So, and I'm interested in this community. I think it's a wonderful community, quirky to the nth degree from what I see. And I just, I don't think that I ever want to leave this community and I really have a great view from Gateway. It's interesting building, wonderful, interesting building, but there's problems with it, believe me. And anyway, but I wanted to offer my name in for that, okay?
Absolutely. I'm going to give you my card so you can give me your information so that when you get done.
Okay. And I had a question about this residential inspection, safety inspection.
Sure.
Like, how would that operate? Like, okay, like, is, as a renter, okay, if I have a problem, is it, do I go, if I have a problem with my space, I don't think it's safe or it's rundown and they're not maintaining the place correctly, I go to apparently CASSI?
Yes.
The code enforcement?
Yes.
And then they come by? But with this program, would the leasing agent or the rental agent be charged for that, her to come out and look at the problem?
So initially, they'll be paying a fee and so this will start in beginning of January of next year. And so the first fee will be due on, will be due from then to April 15th. Once they pay that fee, the next, from April 15th on, will we start doing inspections? So they'll be complaint driven like you're talking about and ultimately we'll do proactive inspections where we can decide, okay, we're into this area of town and we'll start inspecting. But over a course of a two-year period, we will, we intend to inspect every property in the city. So your question was, what was the, I'm sorry, what was the last part?
Well, with the rental agent or the leasing, the people that own the building, the landlords, so to speak, would they be, they would have to pay for her to come out?
So the $40 pays for us to go out initially. So after we do the inspection and they don't fix it, we do a reinspection, we would charge them a second reinfection, inspection fee. But that fee they're paying as part of this program pays for us to go out there and do that.
Now, I was here the last council meeting and they said they wanted this program because I think Newport had it and some other communities have it.
All the river cities have it except for us.
What has it done for them? I mean, really, has it improved their rental units?
Yes, it has.
Oh, you have documentation? Okay, I was just curious because sometimes we get into a kind of metooism when it comes to things.
Now, we're the last one that doesn't, we're the only one that doesn't have an active rental program in the river cities. Lando has one, Covington, Newport and Bellevue. We had one at one point, but for some reason, years ago, they stopped doing it. I'm not really sure why. I wasn't here at the time. But in speaking with other city managers, it has really helped improve their properties by doing this program. We have a lot of great landlords who maintain their properties and do a great job. They shouldn't be concerned because they'll be fine. It's the ones that are, that are basically giving out, are renting out unsanitary and unsafe spaces that we're really concerned about. This is really about legislation intended for tenants, not to punish landlords, but to protect the tenants.
And that's a worthwhile goal. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
At least for now.
Really excited about you wanting to be on the museum board. That's awesome. The podium is still open for anybody who would like to speak with council administration on tonight's agenda. Come on up. Name and address, I'm sorry.
Oh, Pat Getz, 101, Belmont Avenue. Okay, the reason I wanted to, I feel kind of silly to tell you the truth because I've been to council meetings years ago when we moved in, that was about 20 years ago, and haven't been back since last week. And I think of all the good things that the council does, I'm here about the golf carts and I'm thinking that's what brings me down to a council meeting? But anyway, it did catch my attention. And I don't really have a lot to say about it, except my original thoughts were just that it would kind of connect us with our neighbors in Bellevue and in Fort Thomas and would connect them to us. Some people had concerns about being overrun with golf carts. I don't really feel that's an issue. If you drive through any of the other cities, you don't see them. I was curious, though, to see what they discussed in Bellevue and I went on their website and looked at the council meeting when that was an issue for them. And they simply read it and voted it in and it was unanimous. And I wondered if there was anything, any discussion about it. So I, in the meeting, they mentioned a man named Tom Swallow, I think it was. So I looked him up online. He was the one who introduced it. And he's this 81-year-old resident of Bellevue. And I said, well, what was the discussion? What were the pros and cons? And he said, well, he said, I just thought it would be a good idea that it would be a progressive move for our city and it'd be something positive. He said, that was about it. So anyway, so I didn't have much information from him, but apparently it seems like it might be a good idea. So I'm just, you know, I'm hoping that this gets accomplished.
Hold on a second.
So why are you hoping?
Why am I hoping? Well, okay, I think, I think it would be fun. I think you'd see some people have them. I think, like I said in the beginning, I think it would unite some of the different cities. It would connect us. I think we might see people frequenting the businesses that might not normally come down to Dayton. You know, that's pretty it. It's not a real deep, you know, thing, but I just, I think, I don't see the downside, especially because in talking to some people, I think you are very concerned about safety measures and that. And I think, you know, I appreciate that. That's one thing I can see about this council, that everything you do is really for the betterment of the city. And I feel like this would be part of it. And but I think, and I think if you had the levity, like I think the manager, the city manager and the rules, I read the rules from both cities that have it, and they're allowed to make amendments if a problem occurs or something like that. And of course, they, they would be safe in the sense that they have to be street legal and have certain tires and, you know, brake lights and all that stuff.
That, on the agenda tonight, we are, we do have a resolution, an order resolution adopting rules and regulations for those carts. And so there are a number of rules that you have to have. Basically, you got to register it like you do a car, have an inspector, a sheriff, have street tires so that, you know, it drives properly. And we have a number of other things that are set forth there. But that will, if they approve the ordinance, then they will also approve those rules and regulations to go with that. I was at a city managers' meeting at South Bank today and this topic came up and I was surprised. I thought there were only a few cities that have it. But Covington's had, allowed it for five years. Lando's allowed it for a couple of years. Fort Thomas has allowed it for a couple of years. Newport is in the process of considering it. And of course, Bellevue just adopted it, too. So, and what we're talking about is having an interlocal agreement between Fort Thomas, Bellevue and Dayton, and perhaps even Covington and Newport that allows you to travel from one city to the next near a golf cart.
Yeah.
So that's something that would have to be approved by council, but the idea is to allow people to go from either community.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I have a question. When you were talking about talking to those different cities, have there been any serious injuries or fatalities?
About that, then there's really been nothing, you know, any serious injuries. When we were in Covington, when I was in Covington years ago, we had one guy that was very dangerous driving a golf cart. And he would never have been able to drive that golf cart under the rules that are in place now. You have to have him inspected because it was in horrible shape. And the police ended up having to get him off the road because he would drink and drive his cart. By the way, vehicular traffic laws in Kentucky will apply. Drunk driving is still legal on a golf cart and you have to follow all the traffic rules. So you're not going to, just because you're in a golf cart doesn't mean that you're not going to be cited if you violate those traffic rules.
I think my concern is that they can follow these rules and they can keep up with the speed. I'm worried about what happens in a collision.
And then a bicycle or motorcycle, you're, you know, you may be a little bit safer actually in a golf cart than those, but they're all dangerous if you're, if you're in a collision with a car and you don't have the protection of another car and the airbags, all that stuff. It's, it's more dangerous. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Member Neiman. The podium is still open for anybody who would like to address council administration on tonight's agenda. Anybody else? All right, we're going to go ahead and close that. Moving right along on the ordinances, this is the second reading. This is ordinance 2022 number 16, the hot topic for the evening. It's an ordinance authorizing the use of golf carts on certain streets within the city of Dayton. Ms. Myers, would you would please?
Second reading, ordinance authorizing the use of golf carts on certain streets within the city of Dayton, providing for inspection and a city permit and sticker establishing speed limits and required equipment, hours of operation, age and operator's license, and empowering the city administrator to make and or amend rules and regulations regarding ownership and operation of golf carts.
Here.
There are rules and regulations that I promulgated that you all will have before you to vote on later on in the agenda, too. So in addition to this ordinance, those will also be voted on by you if you all decide to approve the ordinance.
And that, of course, is a second reading. Do I have any members of council who would like to adopt ordinance 2022 number 16?
So moved.
So moved by Member Volter. Do I have a second? Second by Member Lovins. Any discussion regarding this ordinance? Joe?
Yeah, just saying golf carts sounds kind of elitist. I think we also have ATVs, scooters, unlicensed scooters and mini bikes to contend with. On section three, the owner of a golf cart shall be required to have the golf cart inspected by the Campbell County Sheriff. Do they have to take it to the sheriff or is the sheriff going to come to them to inspect it?
They can do either. 20 bucks to take it to the sheriff, 40 bucks if they come to inspect at your house.
So there is a fee payable to the sheriff for that?
Yes.
Not to the city. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Section seven, a golf cart can only be parked on hard surface pavement such as parking lots, parking spaces on city streets and in parking spaces designated by the city in its parks. It may not be parked on city sidewalks. We have a parking issue in many neighborhoods in town already and we're not like some of our neighboring communities that have driveways and garages all over the place. Are we going to have golf carts parked on the street year round?
Obviously, when we wrote this, I think we were contemplating parking in our commercial area, but that is something I guess we need to look at. I think most people won't keep their golf carts outside if they have a place to put them inside. But, yeah, I mean, if that's a concern about residential areas, we can address that. So I, that's something we can talk about. We can change, the great thing is that we can change our rules and regulations if that's something you want to, to enforce.
I just see in many neighborhoods, it's going to be an issue. And like I said, not many people have a driveway and a garage, especially down in this area of town. And I sympathize for their neighbors that are already fighting parking problems. Section nine says the city administrator shall be empowered to make new rules and regulations or to amend existing rules and regulations regarding the operation of golf carts in the city of Dayton. I take that to mean that any new rules or regulations will not require council approval?
Clear. Just like tonight, anytime that there's any rule changes, you will approve it. That's what the rules are on agenda for tonight. I should have made that clear in there, but it's not.
Okay, then I'm reading it wrong. That basically it says the city administrator shall be empowered to make the rules. Okay, those are my questions, sir, on the-
Thank you, Member Neary.
I think some of those are valid concerns, but, and you know, when this ordinance first came out, I was opposed to the golf carts. Did a little research and got some safety issues clarified and addressed through the city manager, which I appreciate very much. Thank you. And then started also researching the price of a golf cart. New golf carts can cost anywhere from about $9,000 to $14,000, $15,000.
Those are the cheap ones.
I saw a used one that was 15 years old and somebody wanted $6,000 for it. And I'm not sure it was retrofitted with the necessary equipment to be on the street. So I don't envision this inundation of carts. And also, I think if people are going to pay that kind of money to have them, they're probably going to park them in the garage or in a covered area. You know, I just don't think it'll happen. I don't think they'll be parking them out on the street. And we also, if you look at the rules and regulations that are coming up, we have limitations in terms of their use at time of year. So I think all those things would probably take care of them. But, so those are just my thoughts.
Thank you, Member Volter. Do we have any other discussion regarding 2022 number 16?
I would encourage that we continue to pursue, whether it be an interlocal agreement or whatever the agreement is with the neighboring cities. Up on Lincoln Road, there's Bellevue and Dayton on one side of the street versus the other. The Bellevue people have their golf cart allowed and currently we don't. So I think getting together with all of our river cities and adjoining cities to get this, everybody on the same page so that police especially know what the rules are all over the place, I'd really like to pursue that option.
You see what happens here tonight and if it's approved, we are going to, I talked to Mr. Warnock, we're going to put something together to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Neary. Any other comments regarding 2022 number 16? I'm going to go ahead and close comments. Can I get a roll call, please? Ms. Myers.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
As this is written, no.
Member Neiman?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
Member Lovins?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Moving forward, the next article on the agenda will be ordinance 2022 18. And this is an ordinance to increase the number of members on the museum board from three to five. Do I have a motion to accept 2022 number 18?
So moved.
Member Neary's made the movement. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Member Neiman's made a second. Do we have any discussion regarding 2022 number 18? Ms. Myers, roll call, please.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Neiman?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
Member Lovins?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Unanimous. The next is the last second reading we have for the evening. And this is an ordinance, amending ordinance 2022 number 14, there's that number again, setting forth compensation and number of authorized positions for employees under the Dayton Job Classification System. Do I have a motion to accept ordinance 2022 number 19?
Wait, can I make a motion?
Yeah, you can.
I have, I have a request from Scott Basler, who wouldn't be here tonight. And he asked that we table this discussion until last, or this vote until next month, when he can be here.
All right, so there's a motion to table. Can we do that in absentia? So you're, so you're making the motion to table?
Yeah.
Okay, so you made the motion. We have to have acceptance of that. Do we get table it? Do we have a second to table this ordinance till next meeting? Would anybody like to second that table?
I think he wanted to be here to discuss and be here for the vote. He wanted to be here to discuss and to vote. And so he asked me to make the motion-
He wanted to be here to discuss the ordinance and to vote on it.
Impact any of the employees? This isn't holding up anything for them?
Really?
Wait a minute. Okay, he's talking about hiring the new code officer.
Assistant code officer.
So that's the part, that, that code officer will not be hired until the program is about ready to get started. So we got plenty of time on, on that. So that program will start until next year. So there's no rush.
But we would vote, we would vote on it tonight and then he would have to-
If you voted on it-
Bring it up again and-
All we're doing, this is not saying we're hiring anybody. We're just saying that if we were to hire labor, if we were to hire a code, part-time code inspection guy, this is what we pay him.
And again, this is already written in the budget and was one of the top issues on, on the council. All right, second to table? All right, so it's been tabled.
You all will have to, by the way, you all will have to approve any new employee that's hired by the city separately. So this just establishes a position.
Okay.
All right, so we have, we have a motion to table by a member Neiman and a second by a member Lovins. All right, fantastic. It's tabled.
Before we take a vote, sir, I just want to clarify-
There's no vote, sir. It's been tabled.
You have to vote. Did everybody vote on tabling it?
We had a first and a second.
Well, you're going to need to vote on that.
You need a majority vote to table it, correct?
You still have to have a vote on it.
I thought it was a first and a second.
Well, just tabling it? I think you still got to vote, right?
Vote to table?
Yes.
Yeah.
On Robert's rules?
Just like anything else.
Okay.
I do have a question on this and it follows up with Member Kelly's question. Because the pay ranges, the new pay ranges are in some cases way different than the previous ones in this ordinance, is that going to affect any of the pay for the current employees not having this adjustment made tonight?
Hey, Jared, you might want to come out here. Jared prepared this for us and he did all the research. So this is based on both the Kentucky Legal Cities and the Ad District Salary Surveys of all the cities in the community. So Jared, did you hear the question?
Yeah, to answer your question, it will not affect pay. However, we are not paying according to the current ordinance. We're trying to change it to update it to our current, what we're actually paying. So for example, my position, I think, was the top salary was $35,000 or something. So we're actually not following that ordinance. So that's why we're wanting to update it.
We're required by law to have this ordinance showing what their salary ranges that are for all employees.
Paying off the old schedule.
And right now-
We're paying off the old schedule. Yeah, it looks it.
Yeah.
It definitely looks it. I just want to make sure that none of our current employees are going to be affected by a one-month delay. No. Okay.
And they're all within the range that we have there, right?
The, and another thing to consider is that the city is, or is going to hire a city clerk job in the next few weeks and we will need to have that ordinance pass in order to have the correct range for them.
Establishing the position and what we would pay, you only pay that once you decide you're hiring that guy or that gal. So it's no different. We have other positions, like if you look at it, there are positions in there like building inspector and many others that we haven't had for years. They're on the ordinance. That's, but we're cleaning up. We're putting it on the ordinance so we don't have to go through and amend it later on if you decide to go ahead with the rental program. So just because it's on here doesn't mean that we're going to pass that ordinance or hire that person. You have to pass the ordinance and you have to hire the person. That's your prerogative. We're just saying saying that this position, if we were to go forward, is a part-time position paying twenty bucks an hour, or fifteen to twenty bucks an hour, or is that what it is?
Okay, so my question would be, if we approve this, and we haven't agreed for this new position, this right here, us approving it, being toes our vote anyways, it would then become you. Is that correct?
No, that's not right. No, any, any employee's got to be hired by you, not me.
Okay.
He makes recommendations, and then you, and then you, then you approve it. Yeah. So, yeah, this is just saying, these are positions in the city. Just because it's a position, doesn't mean we're going to necessarily seal it.
We've already budgeted for all these positions.
What's that?
We've already budgeted for all these positions.
That's correct.
And council has approved it.
We approved the budget.
And, you know, Scott can still argue whatever he wants to argue about the rental thing without, quite frankly, tabling this. I mean, you know, every time one of us has gone somewhere, I don't think, I don't think we can really, you know, put off council business because we're not, not present. So that's just my thought on it.
I was going to say, there's a number of items in the list that have a zero next to them. So there are positions that aren't currently held, but should the city decide that they need someone in that spot, then they have it already set up so that it would make the hiring process easier.
Okay, and should you make that decision, how do you go forward? You start interviewing someone, we don't have a vote in that. Okay.
So what would happen is, this just says, these are the positions that are available in the city.
Yeah.
But that position not available until you pass the rental property ordinance that, that establishes it.
That's it. Okay.
And then, and then secondly, when we find somebody we want to be in that position, you have to hire, you have to vote to approve that gentleman or woman. So...
So the mayor makes a recommendation, the council, yeas or nays, just like all our employees.
Okay.
There's been a, a motion and a second to table.
Well, I'm worried about what Jared said. If you need this in place now, interviewing, and you want to be able to hire someone.
Well, do you want to rescind your, your table motion?
Okay, I'll rescind it.
Okay, so the, the, the motion I remember Neiman...
You need this in place to hire right now for the city clerk position.
To, to rescind it because you have a motion right now to table it, so... So, in other words, if you want to, if you want to go ahead...
Attorney, is the motion and the second that made for the tabling. So now we vote on the motion to table. Then after that, we can go back to this. Okay.
Okay, well, let me be crystal clear.
Please do.
You need this, you would prefer that this be voted on tonight because you need that pay scale to offer somebody a job as clerk this month.
That's not true.
Isn't that what he just said, that you, that he's, you're hiring a clerk this month?
Oh, clerk. I thought you meant the, yes. Well, that may be, that's true, yes. I didn't realize. I thought you were talking about the inspector. I'm, I'm sorry.
No. Okay.
Okay, so the motion's been made to table by Member Neiman and seconded it. So can I get a roll call on this, Ms. Myers, just to make sure everyone's clear?
This is a motion to table. Member Neiman?
Aye.
She said aye.
Member Kelly?
No.
Member Lovins?
That was a no.
Member Volter?
They're sharing a mic.
Everybody's clear what we're doing here.
No.
So, nice and loud. So what we're voting for, what we're voting for right now is to table. So if you're voting the...
Correct, it's the tabling vote.
Okay, all right. So...
So we had aye by Member, all right, nay by Member Volter.
Member Neary?
No.
All right, so the motion fails. So the tabling motion failed. However, we still have on the docket ordinance 2022 number 19. I'll read it one more time. What's that? Member Volter?
I make the motion to approve ordinance number 2022 number 19.
All right, Member Neary has made the motion to approve 2022 number 19. We have a second.
Second. Second.
Member Volter has made a second. Do we have any discussions regarding 2022 number 19? Anyone? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move to the vote. Roll call, please, Ms. Myers.
Member, Member Kelly?
Aye.
Member Lovins?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Neiman?
Aye.
The ayes have it. All right, now on the first readings. The first reading that we have on the first readings would be 2022 number 20. Now, this is an ordinance creating a new subchapter of chapter 150, rental property titled Residential Rental License and Safety Inspection Program, to establish a rental property inspection program. Ms. Myers, is there anything to read?
Ordinance 2022 number 20, an ordinance creating a new subchapter of chapter 150 of the Dayton Code of Ordinances titled Residential Rental License and Safety Inspection Program, to establish a rental property inspection program in the city of Dayton, including obligations of owners of residential rental property in the city. How inspections will be conducted and enforced by the city imposing a rental license fee of forty dollars per rental unit, and establishing penalties for violation of the ordinance of not less than fifty dollars per day per violation, but not more than two hundred and fifty dollars per day per violation, up to a maximum of five thousand per citation, and a property lien in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars per rental unit.
Second first reading of this ordinance. We had it on the agenda last time for our first reading. Councilmember Basler had a number of questions and concerns. I addressed those concerns and redrafted this ordinance. Among the things I did was indicating that this is going to affect until January 1, 2023, that the owner of rental properties, and this is just residential rental properties, not, not commercial properties, will need to obtain their licenses by April 15, 2023. If they're not obtained by that date, then this, the properties violate this ordinance, will be subject to enforcement. That the license authorizes that the city start doing inspections after April 15, and that there will be done on a biennial basis. So every two years, we're going to endeavor to inspect all the, all the units in the city, which is about two a day. So we think that's doable with a, a part-time inspector and with help with our code enforcement director and others. So those were the changes primarily that were made to address Scott's concerns. So again, this is a first reading. It's not going to be up for a vote, and, and that will be up until the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Fawcett.
Sir, I have a clarification, and I'm asking for, in light of the question earlier from the audience, this ordinance includes all rental properties in town, including the new facilities in Manhattan Harbor.
That's correct, all residential rental properties.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
A rental property, residential rental property, they are included. We've also talked about doing an Airbnb ordinance, and that's still in discussions, and we've got to change our zoning as well. We have discussions with Campbell County zoning about that, but that's still on the chalkboard to get done, so. Starting a corporation or an LLC under state law, you're required to have what's called a statutory agent. So when you get a lawsuit or you get notices from the government, they know where to go. Same thing here. We need to, if you're an out-of-state entity, we need to know who gets notices from our code enforcement board or whatever. So we want you to identify somebody in the state that is handling this property for you so they can deal with issues that we may have.
Again, that was a first reading. The next first reading on the docket is ordinance 2022 number 21. Now, this is an ordinance creating a new chapter, 117, of the Dayton Code of Ordinances titled City of Dayton Smoke-Free Air Ordinance, prohibit smoking in places of employment and public places in the city of Dayton. Ms. Myers, if you would, please.
City of Dayton, Kentucky ordinance number 2022 number 21, an ordinance creating a new chapter, 117, of the Dayton Code of Ordinances under title X1 Business Regulations, titled City of Dayton Smoke-Free Air Ordinance, to prohibit smoking in places of employment and public places in the city of Dayton, Kentucky.
And that was a first reading of 2022 number 21. On the next page of your docket, you'll see resolutions orders. Resolution order 2022 number 26 Romeo, approving the rules and regulations for the use of operations of golf carts in the city of Dayton, Kentucky. Do I have a motion to accept 2022 number 26 Romeo? Member Volter's made the movement. Do I have a second? Second by Member Neiman. Any discussion?
Yeah, on the inspection and license, I am presuming that, I mean, the golf cart owner has to pay twenty-five dollars to the city of Dayton for a registration sticker. I am presuming that they will have to have, at that point, they'll, they'll have to show the insurance and the inspection by the Campbell County Sheriff.
That is correct. That is correct. We won't issue a sticker until they show us that. That's correct.
Understood. Thank you.
Appreciate the, the effort on the, the safety issues.
Great suggestions. Thank you.
Any other comments regarding this ordinance or resolution? No more? Okay, get a roll call, please, Ms. Myers.
Member Lovins? Member Volter? Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Neiman?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
The ayes have it. And that closes this evening's orders and resolutions. Coming up next, we have the department reports, and that's everybody's favorite time of our Dayton City Council meetings, as we go to the wheel to see who goes first. And I know Joe didn't have this app on his phone. I apologize. You guys missed this last month, but we're back, baby. So let's see who goes first. Cassie, you went a lot. Let's see who. Public Works.
Feeling well tonight, so he sends his apologies that he can't be here.
All right, so the winner is not available this evening, but we'll move along to the next winner. The Police. Chief Haffill, this podium is yours, sir.
Thank you. You guys had my monthly report. I don't have anything else to add. So if you guys have any questions?
Chief, you want to talk a little about the school resource officer issue and the new law that's been passed in Kentucky and how all these school districts are scrambling to satisfy it?
Sure. I, I talked about this at the last meeting. We're actively looking for a school resource officer. The new law passed that the schools have to provide the school resource officer. It's not the cities, it's not the police departments, but we have a great relationship with the school. They prefer to keep Dayton. We work well together, so we have a partnership and working together. I'm trying to help him find a school resource officer. It's been difficult. At this time, you know, we're having a hard time filling officer spots. So let alone school resource officer spots, it's even harder. So we do have a couple people that we're talking to right now. The School Safety Commission has deemed Dayton to have two separate campuses, so they are saying we need a school resource officer for each campus. Until, I guess, they acquire the API building, that would be considered one campus. Or it's up to the school safety administrator to decide, make that decision. So we are trying as hard as we can to try to get somebody in before the beginning of school, and we're not the only ones. I know surrounding areas are having a hard time filling, filling these spots also. So it's pretty common to find somebody right now. Yes, we're just assisting. It's, the schools have to provide the pay. They, I guess, the elected officials pass the laws to have them and require them, but there's no money available right now for the schools to pay for it. So you, like Fort Thomas, they have to have seven school resource officers because they're supposed to have one in each school. So you can think of the money, how much that's going to cost for, I mean, you have to pay for cruisers, you have to pay for equipment and all that. So we've done fairly well. I'm not worried about it right now. I think we will have somebody in there by the time school starts. If, if not, you know, we're, we're down there. I think we have three on a shift, two to three on a shift, that we're walking through the schools, and we're down there until, until we do find somebody.
Even in the past, the resource officer was paid partially through a grant program, right? Was that a state grant, or was that a federal grant?
They're not getting the grants anymore.
So they did away with them? Was it state?
Yeah, it's, they did away with it a couple years ago, I think. The school has just been paying it out of, out of their budget. They budgeted for it. They knew they had, have it. So it's something that they budgeted for. I think it, it affected with the new laws, it affected, I guess, some of the, the budgeting for this school year coming up. So like I said, it's something where, where, I mean, I've been trying to work with them for, for the past two weeks. It was something, I think, the second weekend in July is when I was notified that our school resource officer was not going to return this year, something. He has another business that he attends to, and he said he can't do both. So we've only had two weeks, really, the two or three weeks to, to try to find somebody and put, put flyers out and put stuff on Indeed and, and the papers that we're looking for one. So we always do find one, and I'm, I'm not worried about it. I think we will find one. So we had our, we, I'm trying to think, it was Tuesday, I'm sorry, Monday, we had the, our annual safety meeting that we usually have every year at the beginning of the school year with the school, to go over our emergency plans to make sure everybody's still on the same page, and nothing has changed. So we've already accomplished that. So like I said, the last thing we have to do is get somebody in the schools, so.
Any other questions for Chief Haffill for the Police Department? Thank you, Chief. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, it's down to two. Sorry, Cassie. Chief Atkins? Sorry, Cassie. Chief Atkins, Fire Department, please.
Always love those ladies first. Thank you. You all have my report. Couple things just to touch on. I feel like I'm a broken record. Our runs are continuing to trend upward. As of right now, we're about 20% higher than where this time last year. You know, Ms. Lovins said it before the meeting started, that ambulance just runs nonstop. I see it every day. These guys go out and they make decisions that affects people's lives. And I, again, I go on the record every month, say I can't say enough about how my crews, how well my crews do. We've got a fireball meeting coming up on the 17th. That'll be at the Callahan Center in Bellevue. Happy to say that one of my two injured people are back, so now I'm just down to one injured person. Like Chief Haffill said, we did have our meeting Monday morning with Dayton schools. We do that every year, just kind of touch base, make sure we're all on the same page, and we get our safety plans, make sure there's any changes or anything going on with that. So we do work closely with the schools, both Dayton and in Bellevue. So we kind of always know what everybody's doing, and we're all on the same page in the event of, knock on wood, an incident that we need to take care of. Beyond that, I don't have a whole lot else to share.
Thank you, Chief. Does anybody from council or administration like to have any questions for the Chief of Fire Department?
What a council for the increase in runs. What kind of runs are they?
You know, I mean, I've been trying to, you know, I've been looking at the runs, and they're all over the place. I mean, if you look, I think, yeah, if you look, they're just, you know, we've got everything from sick people from falls. You know, we do have our, you know, continue to have overdoses, but that level's not nearly as high as it's been in years past. And we just have some sick people in the cities. You know, we have a decent elderly population, and as that increases, our runs will increase as well. And then we just have some people that just have health problems of all ages, not, I don't want to single out the elderly, but of all ages. And a lot of, a lot of, and it's not just our city, other cities too. A lot of the population uses the ambulance and the emergency room as their primary care. And, you know, so we're the first step in that. So, but there's, I've been trying to look at it because it's, I mean, it's, you know, if you look, this month has been the busiest month of the year for the fireside and for, you know, for the ambulance. And I can't explain it. I've been scratching my head because the guys are just like come back cheating. You know, and it is, it's nonstop, and it's all day, and it's all night. The guys are earning their money.
Yeah, I would like to point out, and you mentioned it already, but some really good news in this. I remember not too long ago, we were running out of Narcan.
Yes.
Right now, year to date, with both cities, you're listing only 28 Narcan runs, which is less than one per week. So I think that has a lot, a lot to do with our policing, our code enforcement, the general populace.
It is. I think it's education as well. You know, the citizens are realizing that, you know, it's a bad deal, and they see that there's, you know, fentanyl and, you know, when the car, fentanyl, all this stuff is going on, and I think it scares some people. You're always going to have those members of the community that have issues, have addiction issues. But I think education has a lot to do with it, and the police have a lot to do with it as well. So. So it's only if somebody calls and asks for class. We don't have a set schedule every month. We have a couple of instructors, and if someone calls and says, hey, I need CPR, can I get a CPR class? So a couple years ago, we did offer, and we did try to push like a community CPR class, and we didn't have a really big turnout for that. I mean, we had, I think we had maybe 15 people or something like that, but. I'm sorry? No, if you need to call, call the firehouse. Call the firehouse. So, and there's a lot of times that, you know. I'm not sure exactly what the minimum should, because Jennifer Duke, one of our firefighter medics, is one of our instructors, and then we have another one that is an instructor as well. And I think probably maybe 14 or 15 is the youngest, maybe they'll do. I think, and I don't want to, I don't want to misspeak, I'm just guessing. But call the firehouse.
Are you able to tell us something about how to get ready to start school?
Sure. Well, so we just did, they just did like, I think, the bus drivers for Dayton a couple weeks ago. You know, usually the football coaches will call us up and say, hey, we need, you know, I need my coaches to get CPR certified or recertified, and we'll do that. So we're pretty, we try to be pretty amenable. If somebody calls and says, hey, I need a CPR class, can you, when can you do one? And we try to get the schedule. So, but we don't have like set monthly CPR classes. It's just, if somebody calls and needs one, okay, we'll try, and I'll put them in contact with one of our CPR instructors, and they do it when they can get a schedule. Yeah, just like I said, call the firehouse, and we'll get you, we'll get you in contact with one of the instructors, and they can get that set up. So.
Thank you, Member Lovins. Else have any questions for Chief Atkins? All right, Chief, good evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Well, Cassie, there's no reason to spin the wheel.
So you don't have a report for me. My last report went through the last date, so my next report will be a full month. It's been busy. I mean, we've had a lot of complaint inspections. I don't know if, I don't know what's going on. I don't know if there's a lot of evictions going on, people are calling and complaining, but we've gotten into several units, which then has triggered other units. So that's been interesting. And that's about it. I'd like to thank Chris for the call we got yesterday. He went with me and found out it was just a skunk. It wasn't a deceased person or anybody. So.
Is that River Point?
That was, yes, River Point.
Yeah, I heard it was smelly.
Yes. So, yeah, I mean, there's just a lot going on. So, do you have any questions?
Questions for Cassie? We hear the term running the tires off of things, and sometimes I think that applies to you, Cassie. You, you're a tirelessly working person for our city, and we appreciate you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right.
Good party planner, too, that whole event we had last week.
Yeah.
Donna was pretty much her handiwork, so thanks for doing that, too.
You're welcome. I enjoyed it. It was nice to do something for a nice person. But yeah, anytime you guys, I mean, like Beth, she emailed me today. Anytime you have questions, just email me. It goes right to my phone. I'll answer it, whatever. So, good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cassie. And that is the final of the department reports. Next up is a member, or City Administrator Fawcett for his city administrative report. Mr. Fawcett.
Just a couple of things. Update on Manhattan Boulevard. All the fill was in, gravel's down, and they expect to start the curbs on the final section of Manhattan Boulevard that will connect down to Mary Ingalls Highway. One issue they are waiting on is they have to move utilities. So you see that big valley there where they are, where they filled it in. Duke's got to move those before they can finish the fill and the road. So they are working forward and making the road happen, but in order to connect it to the next property, they'll have to get those utilities out of there. So the other thing is that, what I couldn't announce last meeting, but I think I can now, is that Roebling Bookstore and Coffee is coming to Dayton officially. I talked with Richard Hunt, the owner of Roebling, and he'll be probably moving into that space in late September or mid-October, depending on some issues. But that's a space right across the lodge, one side, across the street from the Dr. Herbst office. It's a beautiful building. I got to go, Jared and I got to go in and look at it. It's going, really cool inside space. I had no idea. So it's going to be a really nice venue. I'm going to do a little press release about it, and we'll put something out in our newsletter. The back room is going to be a children's area, and they've got like three or four rooms, and the coffee and service area will be up front. So really neat addition. We'll have bookings of really nice coffee shops in the city, which is great. And finally, I just want to say, we miss you, Donna. Tiffany's doing a great job, but I'm sure you're probably at home watching tonight. This is probably the first meeting you've missed in a long time. But we're getting by. We still miss you, and we appreciate everything you did for the city. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Fawcett, and I'd like to welcome Roebling Points Books to Dayton. How exciting is that? We have a bookstore and a coffee store right there on the avenue. So that's going to benefit the city and welcome new visitors. And also, if you haven't seen that connection part on Manhattan Boulevard to Mary Ingalls Highway, it's pretty impressive. So we're really excited about seeing that completion. Next in the docket would be audience participation. So if anybody would like to address city administration, city council on anything, really, this podium is yours. Please state your name and address, sir, even though we all know you.
Hey, guys, how you doing? This is Ben Walls. I'm at 131 Grant Park Drive. So appreciate you guys allowing us to speak tonight. I did bring a couple of our neighbors tonight. I know I've been working with Jay and Jay. I really appreciate your help. We've got some crumbling streets up on Grant Park, including Michigan Avenue, which kind of dovetails into it. So Jay and I have been working, I'm the HOA president up there, but we have been working to try to address some of the issues or think of some other ways to go about getting things fixed. There are some drainage issues from some of the residents in the neighborhood, and we had looked into a plan with Sanitation District where it's kind of a three-way split. Unfortunately, out of the eight neighbors that we had identified to participate in that, we only had four that were willing to. So that kind of, with it being a cost split, as soon as one person drops out, next thing you know, everybody's cost goes up. So when, I know Jay, when we last left off, that was kind of dead in the water. So I wasn't sure. The streets are kind of getting worse, and I know there were some patches done last year. Those are already starting to kind of break up. So I'm just kind of asking, I guess, on behalf of the residents, if there's any other options that we can look at. I know that one option would be to like do an assessment on, you know, specific residents. And I know that's not necessarily ideal, and it's not what I'm pushing for on anybody, but, you know, I'm just trying to figure out what would be another option.
Let me play a little background for you. You already know this, but, so we've been working several months, maybe a year on this issue. The problem with the deterioration of the streets is because of the water runoff, and we don't fix the water runoff. It's silly to fix streets because they're just going to be back in the same condition a few years later. So we're trying to get to the heart of the problem. We had our engineer design a pretty nice system to deal with. We had like basically, what, six houses, I guess, we looked at?
I think it was eight.
And initially, then we went down, but we were going to do a test run and try to deal with this water. So as a lot of people know, that used to be a pay lake, and there are natural springs there, plus it's in a valley and hills up those sides, which Property Owners Association owns those hills. So, and then we have people have some pumps that are pumping it outside, and so we get all this excess water coming down, which is causing the deterioration of the streets. So, I mean, we could make some repairs, but it seems silly to make those until we can get a resolution to the water issue. So to me, there's this couple of things we can do. The homeowners association, I don't know if you have enough money to do it. That seems like something that would be a natural thing for them to do. Some of the property owners were willing to do it, but unless all will want to do it, it's, we can't really do it. We have, it's private property, so we can't spend public money on private property, but we can spend money to repair public properties. So the idea was to have ST1 pay 50%, and then we were going to split 25%, 25% city and you. And then that would be making street repairs in the process. So, so, I mean, the question is, do we want to make street repairs? I mean, and if we do, who's going to, are we going to pay for those? Or are the residents going to pay for those? But it seems silly to make repairs if we don't fix the core root of the problem, which is the water.
Yeah.
And so I'd really like to do that, but, you know, is there any way the homeowners association can step up and maybe pay half of those residents?
We've talked about portions of that. I think what we struggle with is that some of the residents in the subdivision have already paid out of pocket to have that, there's similar issues taken care of. So it felt a little bit unfair to say, oh, two years ago, I spent, you know, $4,000, $5,000 to get this tied in, and now someone else is going to get it.
Right.
Essentially, for free, or they're going to get subsidized by money that the other homeowners are paying. I'm not necessarily opposed to it in an idea, like a perfect situation where nobody had done anything yet, and it was a fresh issue. I think that was kind of one of our concerns with doing it that way, but just wasn't sure if there was.
So the other alternative you mentioned would be a special assessment.
Yeah.
Which would be when you would assess individual property owners, a certain amount of money to pay for the cost of improvement. I live in Fort Thomas. They assess, anytime your street is repaved, you get an assessment.
Yeah.
And you pay your portion of that.
Yeah.
Of that cost. That's something we could consider, too. But again, I would also incorporate those fixes and those runoff. Otherwise, you're going to be, we're going to be facing the same issue.
Same stuff.
Down, down, down the road. So, but that's something we could talk, I could talk to city council about. I mean, that's, those are concrete streets, so they're not cheap to repair. That's the problem.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And if it was just repaving, that was something, you know, easy to accomplish, but it's expensive endeavor. Just fixing the sewers was expensive, and of course, everything's expensive now with post-pandemic cost of concrete and everything else. So it's, it is a problem. I understand that it's not getting any better. We did repair one area last year, but apparently it's starting to crack again because of the water issues. So I'd love to fix those water issues, and then when we're fixing the water issues, we obviously would fix the street with that, in that process. So, but that's something that I need to discuss with council and figure out.
Appreciate it. And we'll continue to address the issue and with the, I mean, as an HOA, just to see what other options there are. There are. It's hard to get buy-in from the community up there, just in terms of like overall participation and stuff.
I understand.
Like who would be willing, and you don't find out until you like put something out there, and then all of a sudden, everybody like reacts or whatever, if it's something that they don't like. So.
I get it.
I appreciate it.
So I appreciate your help, and I think we came up a pretty good solution, and unfortunately, we just couldn't get buy-in on it.
Yeah, yeah, it was just one of those. Yeah. Well, thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Walls, and we are dedicated to working with you guys and your HOA on fixing this issue. It's top of mind. Thank you for being here tonight. The podium is still open for anybody else in the audience who'd like to address administration and city council. Yes, sir? Please do.
Okay, my name again is David Cubza. I'm with Gateway Flats Apartments. I have a question regarding Manhattan Boulevard. Who is supposed to maintain Manhattan Boulevard and the entrance, flags, and landscaping and all that? Because I see people working on it. Like, and the other day, I saw, it was a few days before the last community council meeting, the city public works was taking a weed whacker along Manhattan Boulevard in front of, like on signposts and stuff like that. And I just didn't understand why they were doing that, because I was shocked the other, at the last meeting, to find out you only have four public workers, four public works in your public works department.
True.
And it was like, okay, now I understand why certain things aren't done around here. Like, like, you know, that I can see that could be done or not done. So I give them all the credit in the world that they're doing what they're doing, but I don't understand who controls that, who takes care of it, because I see people in like Mercedes-Benz and BMWs working on the landscaping, and those flags, in my opinion, they shouldn't even be up. That's the American flag, and they're torn to shreds.
Right.
And they're not lit. So better not to fly a flag than fly it disrespectfully. And that's all I have to say.
I can answer your question. So the street is a responsibility of the city. When it was dedicated, it became the city's responsibility. So the streets and curbs are our responsibility. The entranceway, including the flags and all the landscaping there, is a responsibility of the Property Owners Association of Manhattan Boulevard, that development. They have their own separate property owner association. That's responsibility. We've contacted them several times about the flags. We have some very passionate veterans in this community, and when there's a bad flag, we learn about it. And we usually go to the property owner, and they take care of it. So, yeah, it's not the first time we've asked them to make those types of repairs. So in terms of public works working, we do have signage up there. So they're, they probably were cleaning around the signs that we own and maintain, but they shouldn't be cutting grass. The flood wall is our responsibility. We have to cut that, and so that's probably what you might have seen as well. So. And so that's probably what you might have seen as well. So. If it was on the flood wall sol- side, that's our responsibility. If it's on the other side, that's not our responsibility. Yeah. Yeah. We have to maintain that. The Corps of Engineers takes us, cut that grass, uh, and maintain that property. So, uh, that's a big job for our, our crew.
I tru- I truly appreciate your comments on the flag. Uh, I, I, it's kind of one of my big things.
The issue is right now in Manhattan Boulevard is that they have, the developer still runs the property owners association and they're in the process of transferring that. I think once that happens, I think you'll see better care and management of these properties, but that's a part of the issue right now and I think that's in the process of happening. Jerry Huntley, who's involved, uh, in that association is pushing hard to make that happen because he wants to have better control over that and it's not happened yet. So that's an issue. Joe, do you have a question?
And just, a- as Mr. Fawcett said, the flood wall is still city property. With the exception of the area in front of Gateway. Gateway, the, the owners of the Gateway property own it all the way down to the street. So they do the cutting there. You'll see them, it's a different cut pattern. I have a picture. Well, and that may be because it was hanging over the curb.
But still, there's priorities and I don't see where cutting weed whacking along Manhattan Boulevard makes any sense. There are better places. I'm sure they can work in Manhattan.
So if you do have a tattered flag, uh, I'd recommend that you could bring it to the VFW, uh, here in Dayton. We also have a proper disposable box at City Hall, which we just installed last month. Uh, so please make sure that all your flags are, are crisp and, uh, we're respecting our country properly. I really appreciate your comments. And the podium is still open. We're going to close the podium if anybody else wants to address council. And we're going to go ahead and close that. Do we have any unfinished business? Counsel? All right. Do we have any new business, counsel? Anything you want to bring up? What you got, Joe?
Real quick, um, especially with all these ordinances on the golf carts and the smoking and everything else. And, uh, uh, we've had some discussions over the past couple of days. Whenever we have first readings, uh, we don't do that much discussion at, in council here publicly. Uh, most of the discussion is at the second reading. I, I know with first readings, a lot of times they're edited up until the last minute. Um, but I think once we do a first reading in a meeting, I'd like to see them posted online, uh, on our city website and on our city Facebook page, because, you know, we're supposed to represent the citizens' input. Uh, and we have a lot of keyboard commentators, uh, and I think putting them, w- once we do the first reading, they're official.
Yeah.
Um, if there would be any changes between first and second, we'd have to.
We generally do that, um, and it is on our website today, both on the blog and, and on the calendar. So you can go to the calendar, today's meeting and click on it and it'll, all the legislation will pop up.
On the agenda list?
The agenda and all the.
And all the ordinances.
Legislation, ordinances and orders. So you can go either the blog or the website, uh, calendar.
Okay.
And they're, they're both there.
So there are, that's already being done?
Councilmember Neiman mentioned it and we didn't have it up as soon as we should have had. We tried, we usually have it on Friday, but, um, with the transition, it was, we didn't have it as one package to put on as a PDF. So I took care of that today. It was on there today.
So just, I guess, as a reminder to John Q. Public Day that they are online.
They are online.
Cool. Thank you, sir.
Thanks to Member Neiman and, uh, our, our administration for taking care of that. More new business. Who's got it? Anybody else? All right. We're going to go ahead and close new business. Uh, we do have a very small portion of executive session to discuss. Uh, so under KRS 61 dot 810 Bravo pursuant to deliberations of the future acquisition or sale of real estate property by a public agency, I'd like to ask council if they'd go into a motion for executive session.
New executive session?
Member Volter's made the motion. Do I have a second? Member Kelly's made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstains?
We can actually move into the conference room as people.
Public is welcome to stay if they like. Uh, probably about five minutes or so, I imagine.